Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth East Council. This third day of October, I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We need a motion to confirm the agenda. And it says that the agenda as prepared for October 3rd, 2023, Meeting of Council of the Township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, all in favor? Carried. And before we proceed, at this time, we want to congratulate Jake to as our new manager of Public Works. And we're going to see more of you. And congratulations, we're so happy that you're taking that position. Okay. For your culinary interest, if you have culinary interest, you can declare that now or as the meeting goes along. We have 14 items on our consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like polled or questioned? No? Okay, I do have one item, just I want to make a comment on it. It's 5.1.14, and that's a Perth East Fire and Rescue Fire Prevention Week, and that is next week. And unfortunately, I'm going to be away for the week. So I just want Bill, if he would extend my congratulations and appreciation for all that they do, and tell them I'm sorry that I'm not going to be here, but I'm going to be out of the country. So I can't be in two places at once, apparently. So if we have no questions, then we have items 5.1.1 to 5.114 as set out on the consent agenda for October 3rd, 2023, regular meeting of council be received for information, and that the minutes of September 19, 2023, regular council meeting be adopted. Moved by Bob, second by Jerry, all in favor? Carried. Okay, we have three delegations tonight. And the first delegation is from Bill Dietrich Drainage Superintendent. And we're doing a drain on part of lot 16, concession one, Ellis Ward. And Bill is joining us on Zoom, so welcome, Bill. Good to see you, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Eggers. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I'll get started here then, if that's okay. The purpose of this meeting this evening is to consider a drainage report under the Drainage Act that our firm has prepared. The title of the project is Road 130. And just a bit of background information, this was initiated under section four of the Drainage Act. The township had received a petition signed by three landowners to upgrade and replace an existing storm drainage system along Road 130. So we had an, after our appointment, we had an onsite meeting where all the land property owners along the road were invited to the meeting. We had a discussion regarding what was required. And then after that, the survey was completed. We had an information meeting on September 6th at the municipal office. And again, the landowners were invited to that. At that point in time, we had an opportunity to review our plans and estimated cost for this project with the property owners, including the roads. The outlet, just to give you a bit, again, a bit more background, our proposal includes outletting this drain. It'll be a closed system into the Richardson Municipal Drain. And the last time the Richardson Drain was cleaned out was 2012. It is an existing municipal drain. And well, the new drainage system that'll be replacing the old storm drain will be constructed along the westerly side of Road 130. And it'll consist of 217 meters of 300-millimeter diameter high-density polyethylene pipe, Bell and Spigot Drainage System. This will all be storm sewer pipe. And then it also includes seven inlets, precast concrete catch basins. And we're also going to be providing seven private drain connections to, from the storm drain to the property line. So that's the drain, as I mentioned earlier, will be installed on the municipal road allowance on the west side of Road 130. The estimated cost for this project is $106,300. And the breakdown of the costs are in the Drainage Report along with the assessment of the costs. So maybe at this point in time, if there's any questions regarding the work that's proposed, I'll be pleased to answer those.
Okay, any questions? No questions? Nope, is that it, Bill?
Okay, the only other thing, I don't know if there's any property owners present, but under section four of the Drainage Act, council is supposed to provide an opportunity for any landowners to remove their name from the petition or add their names to the petition. So I would suggest if that hasn't been done, or you're still, it probably shouldn't, it could be still taken care of under, while we're still considering this report.
Okay, there is no one here from the
Oh, okay. Well, that makes it, I guess, that kind of, it's probably not a requirement then.
Yeah. Okay, good. So if we have no questions, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the presentation from Bill Dietrich Superintendent, Dietrich Engineering Limited, Road 130 Municipal Drain, 2023, parts of lot 16, concession one, Ellis Ward, Township of Perth East, Perth County, for information. And that further, the quarter revision for Road 130 Municipal Drain be held on November 7 at 6:30 PM. We need a mover and a seconder, moved by Andrew, second by Amanda. All those in favor? Carried. Great, thanks, Bill, good seeing you again.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, have a good night.
Yeah, you too. Bye for now.
All right. Okay, our second delegation is Julie Welker, and it's a Source Protection Coordinator from Thames-Siddeham and Region Drinking Water Source Protection. So Julie, welcome to Perth East Council. Good to see you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and welcome, or thank you for having me, everybody. I must apologize if you hear my laptop fan going. It seems to be running high right now, so I hope you can't hear that. If, I just need to pull up my presentation. I can't quite see it on the computer. Okay, I'm just going to use my other screen here. Okay, so again, thank you for having me this evening to explain kind of the risk management program for any councillors that may be new, and update those that are familiar with the program. So next slide, please. So the overview, I'm just going to talk about, you know, why this program came to be, very brief overview, the multi-barrier approach that's being taken, part four under the Clean Water Act, the risk management services and what that means. And we'll scale it down to Perth East so you understand what it means for your community, your area. And then we'll get into the budget, and I'm happy to take questions after that. Next slide, please. Okay, so most of you will be familiar with what happened in Lockerton back in 2000 when the municipal drinking water became contaminated. Over seven, or seven people passed away, and thousands of people became very ill because of this contamination. So when they went and did the investigation into what happened, Justice O'Connor's recommendations as a result of that is we really need to start looking at the sources of drinking water, just not just how we treat it and how it gets to the consumer, but the sources. So that's when the Clean Water Act came to be, in 2006. So there are two programs, and I just always like to make it clear, you know, you have your Clean Water Act that's talking about your source water. And then you have your Safe Drinking Water Act that's really talking about from treatment to people's homes, to the consumer. Next, please. So what does this mean? You know, at the time when the Clean Water Act was enacted, every region, and our region, of course, is a Thames-Siddeham Source Protection Region. We were to develop source protection plan policies. And these policies relate to the activity on the landscape, not land use, but the activity on the landscape. So there's many tools that were provided as part of this Clean Water Act as the part four. And we're talking about prohibition, risk management plans, and restricted land use. So when you implement these part four tools, that's when we're talking about risk management services. So what does that mean? Municipal councils are responsible for part four under the Clean Water Act. The part four under the Clean Water Act is administered and enforced by risk management official and/or risk management inspector. Councils may enter into an agreement with a third party to fulfill the duties under the part four of the Clean Water Act. And in our case here, Perth East entered into it with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority back in 2014. Next slide, please. So our clients to date with our risk management office include City of Stratford, Town of St. Mary's, Township of Perth East, Municipality of Perth, West Perth, Municipality of Chatham, Kent, Township of St. Clair, Town of Plimpton, Wyoming, Village of Point Edward, Municipality of Lampton Shores, and City of Sarnia. Next slide, please. Thank you. So under the Director Technical Rules with the province, they've laid out 22 prescribed drinking water threats. We won't go through all of these, but they go, they involve anything from the application of agricultural source materials to fertilizers, pesticides, road salts, organic solvents, et cetera. So once a threat has been identified on the landscape, the next step is for the risk management official to determine the associated threat circumstances and move to the next steps, and that's engaging the landowner. And we are talking about two different things where we involve chemical and pathogens that are both looked at through these described drinking water threats. So again, what's included with the risk management services scaling down a little bit? Again, we're talking about prohibition where we may not allow an activity to take place. This is the last resort. This is not, you know, we try to actually negotiate risk management plans with landowners to come up with a solution that works for both. We address the threat activities on new sites that come up, which are come up pretty regularly. Ongoing review of development proposals in vulnerable areas. Negotiation and establishment of those risk management plans for newly identified threats. And of course, monitoring inspection program with compliance to ensure that these risk management plans are still holding up with those landowners or businesses. Next slide, please. So what that involves is regular drive-bys, inspections of the vulnerable areas to ensure compliance with these policies. Review and amend risk management plans as activities or property owners change, because that happens quite frequently in some areas. Review and amend those risk management plans to address technical and program changes. And currently, we are in a state of change. The province has put forth multiple changes to their technical rules. So there's new threats that we have to look at, amended threats that we have to reexamine. So the program seems to be in constant flux. It's never a stable state. So we're constantly learning and changing and growing. Fulfilling of the annual reporting requirement. So under the Clean Water Act, it is stated in there that annual reporting must be done by every municipality every year by February 1st. This is to, for the province to ensure that compliance is happening on the landscape. This program is doing what it is supposed to do. And if they see any gaps, they will reexamine what is going on, why is it not working, and what municipalities are not doing what they're supposed to. Further development of risk management services, the database to streamline and automate the reporting. So we're right now currently trying to update reporting, so it is easier for municipalities and risk management officials. So the province is looking at questions like, does this make sense? Is this redundant? What are we missing here? And education outreach, that's a big part, too, is we want to educate the community about what it means to take care of their drinking water. It's not just what I do, like whatever I do affects the whole community. So for Perth East specifically, the systems that our risk management officials work with are the Shakespeare and Sebringville Municipal Drinking Water Systems. And some of the WAPAs from other municipalities, like Oxford County or even the city of Stratford, some of their delineation of their wellhead protection areas will extend into Perth East. So those areas do have to be constantly on the forefront with the risk management officials to ensure that whatever activities happening within those areas are following the source protection policies. Next slide. Milverton, Milverton's a bit of a unique one because it's not in the Upper Thames watershed. It is in the Grand, as you probably are well aware. But back in the day, the Grand doesn't have a risk management office like we do, and it was decided that the Upper Thames would, our risk management official would take care of Milverton under that agreement. So, and that's still true to this day. I have confirmed with the Grand, they're happy with us to continue risk managing this site. Next slide, please. So here, this program's all a bit acronym, so I apologize for not spelling this out, but the HVA, that's the Highly Vulnerable Aquifer. And then we have Significant Groundwater Recharge Areas. And these areas are vulnerable groundwater areas. So we do get proposals in from municipality planners. So if a development comes forward and it's within one of these areas, we don't actually have significant policies that we can implement, but we do talk about have regard for and, you know, use best management practices in these areas because they are vulnerable. Next slide. Okay, so when it comes to the budget, there's ongoing cost reach municipality based on estimated workload. This was done through kind of a technical exercise with the risk management officials. You know, it's, they look at, you know, how many drinking water systems are in the municipality, the number of properties with significant drinking water threats areas, and the types of properties in those areas. So there's a whole criteria list that they kind of plug into a technical estimator, I guess, if you will. So if you look at the municipalities that we are in partnership with, you can see that the first three are 13%. Loews is the Lampton area water system, and that is 33%. And that includes like Plimpton, Wyoming, City of Sarnia, and those, they've all partnered. And when it comes to West Perth and Perth East, it's at 10%. And St. Clair at 8%. And this percent of workload is really important because if we move to the next slide, that's how we estimate the budget for these. So we know what the cost of the program is, and then we break it out based on those percentages. So I've put here in red, the Perth East for the cost of the program for next year will be just over $21,000. And then we counted for inflation for 2025, just over $22,000. And last slide, please. Thank you. So the next steps really is, once we have an agreement with all the partners, we can go ahead with signature. If any partner chooses not to renew, costs need to be reevaluated and re-proportioned out to all of the various municipalities. So with that, I will conclude, and I am happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council? Nope, I don't see any questions. So thank you, Julie, for your presentation.
You're very welcome.
I hope you have a good rest of your night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. We have with us tonight Justin, who is Economic Development Officer, Ashley Tourism Officer, and Maggie Transit Project Coordinator, all from Perth County Economic Development. So welcome to Perth East, glad to see you.
Thank you. That's on. Perfect, thank you. So good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us all here with you this evening. As Mayor Eggers mentioned, we are from the Economic Development, Tourism and Transportation Team of Perth County, and we're here to share our bi-annual update with you all this evening. If we could just go to the next slide, please. Before we jump into our individual areas of focus or expertise, I just wanted to share a few of our events that we were able to host this past summer. Our first notable event was our Full House Tour that took place on June 15th. So in partnership with the Perth Huron Builders Association and our municipal partners, we hosted a self-guided housing tour which showcased five different property types that are available in our area. And this ended with a social reception and poker run at the West Perth Municipal Office. So the purpose of this event was to educate and increase awareness of the variety of different housing options that exist and can be developed here in Perth County. And it was a huge success. So we're happy to share that 100% of our post-event survey participants so that the event was very or extremely informative. Our second initiative that we are happy to report on was our Free Mystery Farm Hop Tour. So on July 8th, our team in partnership with the PCFA and OFA hosted a Mystery Farm Hop event, which provided our 144 participants with the unique opportunity to explore four local farms and their operations. So our participants were welcomed onboard our PC Connect buses, where they were chauffeured to farms and provided with a full itinerary that immersed them into a fun and unique agricultural experience, engaging them with farm animals, sampling local products, and learning more about the ag operations in their very own backyards. Next slide, please. So within 24 hours of launching our Mystery Farm Hop Tour, we completely sold out the event. And to our pleasure, we welcomed many diverse participants from different cultural backgrounds, ages, and socioeconomic statuses. So we're absolutely blown away by the response we received from our participants, such as the touching feedback shown on the screen in front of you this evening. Where Najma, a Perth County resident who has immigrated from India, shares the impact that the event had on her family and friends. So through this event and with further conversations with Najma, who actually lives here in Milverton, I believe, we were provided with a new lens to DEI initiatives. So Najma really emphasized her sincere appreciation for the farm hop as a diverse and inclusive event because rather than a DEI event that celebrated their culture, the Mystery Farm Hop created a space where they were welcomed into our Canadian culture with open arms, providing them with a lived experience to relate to and share with other residents of Perth County, which in turn really helps them to grow roots and create a sense of belonging here in Perth County. Our goal was to host an inclusive event that celebrated our rural agriculture with little to no barriers for participation, which why it was free. However, the extent of our impact far exceeded our expectations. We are forever grateful for the communities that we had reached and learned from through our farm hop event, and we look forward to hosting many more impactful and inclusive events in the near future. And with that, I'll pass over to Justin, I believe, for an economic development update.
Thank you, next slide, please. So in terms of our economic development update, I just wanted to highlight a few areas. So the first area is our digital service squad. So this is our fully funded digital service squad team, human resources that deliver digital service support to any businesses across Perth County, free of charge. So this fully funded program is actually with Perth County until the end of March 2024. And our team, Ricky and Eileen, have been hard at work helping businesses across Perth County. So to date, we've helped 50 businesses, over 50 businesses across Perth County with digital needs, things like social media assistance, website, helping them get their business online, sell online, and improve their presence online. So a very valuable service, and again, continue to offer that to any Perth County business until March 31st, 2024. So please do have them reach out. We work heavily promoting during this past summer the Digital Transmission Grant, which actually just closed on the weekend, which is a $25,000 grant to help businesses develop and implement a digital transmission plan. So we had a number of businesses who've been successful so far and a few others that hopefully were able to complete that over the weekend, and look forward to hearing some more positive results of businesses from the county and hopefully in Perth East, having been successful in that grant. Next slide, please. So this past summer, we had a very successful business tour season. So business retention expansion, our business tours are a critical part of that, and we're really happy to get back to that after the pandemic had postponed and canceled some of those. So to date, we've had five business tours, engaged over 75 different stakeholders from council, staff, various ministries, economic job, Christian trade, OMAFRA, local chambers, and really any business organization that supports businesses, we extend invites to them. And they're a great opportunity for making connections with business owners, management, finding out about business retention expansion challenges, and really showcasing the great things that are built, designed, and sold and serviced here in Perth County. So we were in Milverton, or sorry, in Millbank earlier this year, at Millbank Hardware. Part of the tour, we obviously, you know, we captured some photography and video and look forward to releasing, this is Ben Shaw Canada Controls in Listowel. We look forward to releasing all of the videos we've captured so far this year because they help share kind of to those who weren't able to win the tour, especially young folks, the kind of breadth of opportunities that exist right here in Perth County. So I look forward to hopefully having a few more tours this year and coming back to Perth East, hopefully soon for another one. Next slide, please. So another important part of our business retention expansion program, and one of the direct things we heard, especially on the tour, was the need and the desire from businesses and stakeholders to network and really get connected after three years of COVID and not really, you know, a lot of new businesses have new managers, new staff, municipal offices, and the likes. So just an opportunity to connect all those folks in our community who have an impact on business, whether it be business owners, industry educators, skills training providers, just an opportunity to provide them open networking time in Perth County. So we had our first drop-in in Mitchell a week ago, and we'll be in Listowel tomorrow. You'll need to listen to a legion from 4:30 to 7:00. And it's an open invite to any business, industry stakeholder from across Perth County to drop in, have a chance to meet our team, find out the service that we provide, as well as community partners like the CFDC and other business support organizations. So if you're able to attend, we're welcome to have you there. And then finally, on the business retention expansion front is our annual, not our annual, but our business retention expansion survey. This year in 2023, we're doing things a bit different. We sent out through Canada Post a printed survey to all businesses farm addresses across Perth County, along with the self-addressed stamp download, so folks can send that back to us. And this survey is really critical because it provides our team with information about specific business challenges and opportunities that we can provide resources for, whether it be an expansion plan, whether it be a workforce challenge. By completing the survey, we can really target our response and feedback to those businesses and hopefully help them address that business retention and expansion challenge. So if you did receive one of these in the mail, encourage all businesses and agricultural operations to fill this out. It is, of course, available online as well for those who prefer to do so. And yeah, look forward to receiving these surveys. And just one thing I wanted to highlight, it's different about this survey from other surveys we've done in the past and maybe other organizations are doing it. This is really individually business-focused, so it's not a sample survey, trying to understand larger trends. We've done those before. This is really about uncovering those individual business issues. So please do take the time to fill the survey and either online or through the mail, and look forward to taking action on those business challenges that we receive. Next slide, please. And then finally, from the economic side, is our workforce development initiative. So this year, beginning of summer, we launched our Workforce Attraction and Retention Employer Toolkit, which is an online resource of tools, templates, policies, and best practices on retention and attraction strategies or tools that businesses have developed across Ontario. We've had a consultant take those, kind of distill the best ones out and develop this toolkit where a business can find out about a specific area, whether it be, you know, implementing flexible work practices or potentially some sort of retention bonus or what have you. Access the toolkit, download a resource, and implement in their own business if they so do. So I really want to make it as easy as possible for our businesses to address those critical retention and attraction needs. So this toolkit is one way that we're doing that. To date, we've had over 70 registrants register for access to the portal, so it's been very well received. And it's also being noticed across the province. So I recently presented at the OMAFRA Community Practice on our toolkit, and as well presenting at the Ontario Workforce Development Conference at the end of October. So again, a really valuable resource to our businesses and something that we hope to continue to refine and grow as more best practices are uncovered. So that's it for the active dev update. And I'll pass things over to, actually, for tourism.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Hi, everyone. So you'll read in your update today that Perth County's experiential tourism program is up to 14 active signature experiences. But that number is actually now 15. As just before I came here today, I came from North Perth, where we filmed the 15th Discover More Adventures Discover More Adventures experience. So six of these 15 experiences are located right here in Perth East, so this municipality is really well represented by that program and has a lot of really exciting experiences. The growth of this program is a great testament to just how much there is to experience in Perth County and is a key element in our efforts to increase the number of visitors coming to our rural region each year. In the same spirit, our Discover More Flavor Farm Gate map has grown to 85 participating farm locations, 28 of which are located here in Perth East. These farms are promoted through our updated digital farm gate map, themed farm gate adventure itineraries, new roadside signage, print media, social media coverage, and beyond. Next slide, please. It was a very busy summer, engaging with Perth County destinations and tourism operators with over 114 visits to businesses across the county to distribute promotional material, collect marketing content, hear from business owners, and more. We also continue to grow cycle tourism in our rural region with the launch of a new cycle route map since I've last seen you. We've also enhanced our cycle webpages, launched strategic partnerships with local cycle events, and done some trail support efforts. To date, we have distributed over 3,000 copies of the new Stratford, Perth County, and St. Mary's cycle route map that launched in the spring. The map has proved to be very popular with cyclists, and many of them are requesting copies of the hard copy version of the map. To encourage use of the digital maps, we've implemented what we call stops along the route. So these are available in printable itinerary-style PDFs on our website, as well as on Ride with GPS Strava apps that cyclists can get right to their phone. These efforts fall under key direction number three, to locate and add amenities, services, and signage for cyclists, and key direction number four, to increase the promotion of cycle tourism in Perth County from Perth County's cycle tourism strategy. Next slide, please. As the official destination marketing organization for Perth County, we continue to market Perth County as a top travel destination in Ontario. We do this through a wide variety of marketing channels throughout the year, with notable efforts throughout 2023, including widespread coverage on the Ontario Culinary website and social media pages, a feature in CBC London's Summer Road Trip series, substantial coverage in the Globe and Mail's Explore Ontario Summer and Fall Edition inserts, distribution of tourism promotional posters, brochures, and maps throughout the region, and website enhancements, including, including the development of a brand-new bakery trail featuring 12 Perth County businesses. Please note, this bakery trail may also be growing soon, as Perth East has welcomed a new bakery in Milverton that we look forward to working with. Social media marketing has proven to be a very effective way to attract visitors and promote Perth County's rural destinations. The tourism social media channels saw substantial growth in our following, reach, and engagement throughout 2023. In addition to our own in-house content creation, these increases are also owed to strategic influencer partnerships. We have received very positive feedback on the ROI from featured Perth County businesses and destinations on these partnerships. This sunflower video on the screen before you is a great example of what this looks like. So this video was created in partnership with Curated KW, who are digital creators with pages on Instagram and TikTok. This video that they created at Cadillac Sunflower Field in Atwood has received over 354,000 views. This year, this destination had its busiest season yet, and the owner asked each guest where they had heard about her sunflower field. She reported that more visitors than not had heard about her field through this video. Examples like this help prove the real economical impact that strategic social media marketing can have on our local business community. And with this brief overview of our latest destination development and destination marketing activities, I will pass it back over to Maggie for an update on PC Connect.
Awesome, thank you, Ashley. So our PC Connect's transportation service continues to grow in terms of ridership, continuing to alleviate the transportation barriers that once stood between our residents getting to work, healthcare appointments, education, social services, to visit friends and family, and so much more. Since launch of our PC Connect service, PC Connect has serviced over 24,000 rides, and in the last 12 months, our ridership has grown by 105% compared to the previous 12 months. So in order to continue growing this ridership, on September 5th, we implemented significant route enhancements, which included the termination of Route B. So as you may be aware, in June, our county council approved the recommendation to terminate Route B due to the extremely low ridership it had since launch. So as a result of eliminating this route, we were able to increase service where there is demand for public transportation, and we've added increased frequency on rural Route A, which now operates continuously from 6:00 AM to 7:15 PM, Monday to Friday, making the service even more convenient and appealing for riders to leverage. So residents in Perth East now have two, twice as many options to travel on PC Connect from our stops in Newton, Millbank, and Milverton. So our new service changes have been heavily advertised through a series of channels, such as social media, app notifications, newsletters, posters, radio interviews and ads, newspapers, your local shop opportunities program, digital screens and billboards, postcards, postcard distribution, and so much more. So far, the changes have been very well received, and we're really looking forward to monitoring the ridership on our new rural route A in the near future. Sorry, one more note on this slide. So on June 7th, we also launched our partnership with the PCIN to offer our free library bus passes, and since launch, in just under three months, a total of 551 rides have been completed with these passes. We're extremely pleased with the success of these, this library partnership, which has proven to further alleviate the barriers for leveraging public transportation in our communities. So just for a little bit of background on this program, residents with a library card are able to go into a local branch to rent out a bus pass to travel wherever and however often they need to within their three-day loan period. Next slide, please. Finally, we have been working on a new marketing campaign that highlights the stories of our PC Connect riders and how they leverage the service in their everyday lives. So the purpose of this campaign is to encourage riders to try PC Connect, as well as emphasize the demand for the service, and use these moving real-life stories to help advocate for long-term sustainable funding. So the People of PC Connect campaign will be launching in the upcoming months, and we have a sneak peek to share with you all this evening.
Getting to class used to be a daily struggle for me, but then I found out about PC Connect. My ride to a better future. No more long walks, no more missed buses. With PC Connect, my journey is my study time. PC Connect isn't just a bus line, it's my path to education, my ride to success.
So the series will also include storylines around healthcare, employment, and connecting riders to family and friends, and we're extremely excited to be able to tell the stories of our riders on behalf of our riders, again, in efforts to keep the service on the road for the long term. So please stay tuned on the release of that campaign. And with that, our bi-annual update report is before you all this evening, and we welcome any questions that you may have for us.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Amanda?
I have three questions, so I'll start with the transit, because we just heard from that. With the Go train and the Via Rail service ending in Stratford, are we, is the PC Connect going to fill a gap there? I know that there's been like a lot of chatter from folks that have used that service, including myself. I'm just curious about that.
Yes, so through your worship, we are working closely with the city of Stratford to fill that gap that's going to be left by GO, terminating the pilot project next week. So it's really unfortunate that they will be pulling that service from our communities, but we are working to hopefully get some additional PC Connect buses or runs on the road to connect people with Kitchener Waterloo before that train leaves for Union. So we are working closely, of course, that doesn't come for free, so we're hoping to advocate to the province for some additional funding to do that, to alleviate that gap. But yes, we are working closely with the city of Stratford and other stakeholders who are being affected by this change, and hoping to fill that gap for sure.
Have we been in touch with our MPP's office?
Yes, we certainly have, and there will be a letter going as well, hopefully for on behalf of the county and city of Stratford in the near future, directly to the Minister of Transportation as well.
Great. My other question is, I gotta know, videos are so good, so do we contract those out, or how does that work?
Thank you. Through your chair, yes, we do. Our team has a really great working relationship with Little Big Creatives out of Stratford, who is, yeah, who we use for our People of PC Connect campaign, and I know Ashley uses them as well for a lot of the DMA, as well as the business tours.
My last question, and this will have to be maybe send an email, but I gotta know, like the, the PowerPoint presentation that had the text, and then like the sunflower video, like how did you embed that? Because normally, it's like you have to like embed the video and then press play, but it was like automatically going. I just like, for, I just like, I'm curious to know how you do that, but you can maybe send that in email, but just, I gotta know.
We could follow up with an email.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mike has a couple, we'll let him.
Yeah, just a couple. I wanted to follow up on the PC Connect piece. I know Maggie, you've done a lot of work trying to engage with the employers to try and help with that. Has there been any, any uptick, I guess, from the employers in able to, you know, attract employees who can use PC Connect to get to local employment?
Yes, through the mayor, we have been working really hard on going out and visiting a lot of our local employers to really educate them on the service and the benefits it has to getting their employees to work, or even recruiting employees at trade shows, so, or sorry, at hiring events, and so on and so forth. So we have developed a employer campaign where we offer them some free passes that they can distribute to, to new hires or existing employees. And we're also doing a revamp of that in the very near future, where we're putting together some kits with some really cool promotional items of local, local goods to go into the employee break room. So just really grab more attention, and again, spread the word. So with the changes we've just recently made, we're doing that outreach, outreach again, and letting them know that it's even more convenient now. So we're hoping that we align with a lot more employer start and end times, because again, we have twice as much frequency. So yes, employer outreach is certainly a top priority for us right now.
Great, thank you. And Ashley, this was more maybe related to the tourism piece. Is there any consideration to looking at EV charging stations that align directly with the tourism routes? Is that, there are funding opportunities I know that existed there, just wondering if that's an avenue that's being considered or something that's maybe in the works?
Sure, so through the mayor, most of our focus with EV charging, charging stations has been related to cycle tourism. It's not directly related necessarily, but when we made the cycle map, that's something we looked to put on there, because cyclists might be curious who are coming to the area where they can plug and charge while they're doing their cycling in the area. So the cycle route has been where we've put the most focus on it. However, last week, I was at a Queens Park event with the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario, who are advocating on behalf of the tourism industry on various concerns and issues throughout the province, and EV is a major tourism profile or portfolio right now. So I think we'll see a lot of movement on that in the coming months. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, thank you very much Maggie, Ashley, and Justin for coming. We really appreciate everything you do for us in Perth East and, and how you promote our county. So thanks again, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any public meetings, we have no public hearings. The next item is under planning, we have a zoning bylaw amendment, and Punay is joining us on the screen, so good evening, Punay, good to see you, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Egits, and members of the council. With your permission, I will share my screen.
Sure.
Thank you. So this is a presentation for a rezoning application for a property located at 4229 Line 61, wanting to ward 35 of Perth East. It was submitted by MHPC Planning Group, and the owner is Terry Sayer. So the purpose of this application is to rezonate portion of the subject lands from, excuse my voice, from the Mineral Agriculture Resources Zone, MAR, to a site-specific agricultural zone, to facilitate the construction of a hog finishing barn, which will replace two barns that were previously demolished on the property. The site-specific provision will permit a reduction in the minimum distance separation formula to accommodate the proposed location of the barn. The property is designated as Mineral Agriculture Resources, Peterquerry Agriculture and Flood Pain in the Perth County Official Plan, and is zoned MAR, Mineral Agriculture Resources, Agricultural and Flood Pain in the Perth East zoning bylaw. As for the provincial policy statement, it document protects prime agricultural areas for the long-term agricultural use, and encourages all sizes and intensities of agricultural uses and normal farm practices to be promoted and protected in accordance with provincial standards. It also states that new land use in prime agricultural areas, including the creation of lots and new or expanding livestock facilities, shall comply with the minimum distance separation formula. Then the minimum distance separation formula is a tool approved by the province to determine the required distance between a new or expanding livestock facility and existing sensitive uses, such as neighboring residences. Its purpose is to reduce land use conflicts in agricultural areas and protect livestock operations from encroaching sensitive uses. The minimum distance separation guidelines provide a detailed explanation of the formula and direction for implementing odor setbacks for livestock facilities and anaerobic digestures for sensitive land uses. It also outlines scenarios where MDS setbacks might be varied. The subject lands, as I mentioned, have several designations on them, and section 10, 510 of the Perth County Bishop Plan provides consideration of buildings and structures for agricultural uses in areas that are designated, designated mineral agriculture resource. Agricultural uses shall be permitted in the mineral agriculture resources designation, and the structures that are necessary for the agricultural use, excluding a single detached dwelling, but including a mobile home, shall be permitted as part of the agricultural use. Where lands designated mineral agriculture resources are used for agricultural purposes, at the time of the adoption of this official plan, the use of such lands for agricultural purposes is to continue until such time that the use of such land is required for aggregate extraction. So what is proposed is permitted as per the official plan. The use is permitted. Now, the updated Aggregates Resource Inventory Papers, ARIP for short, acronym, mapping, it was published in 2013, and it uses up to the updated testing process to evaluate aggregate deposits, and has evaluated the subject lands as a sand and gravel deposit with tertiary significance. Now, the Perth County Official Plan defines mineral agriculture resources as only primary and secondary deposits, as identified by the Ministry of Natural Resources in its publication, published Aggregates Resource Inventory Papers. And so the tertiary deposits are not included in that definition. Given that tertiary deposits are excluded, the prospects, prospects of using these lands for aggregate extractions are minimal. Now, the official plan also requires the MDS 2 setback to be met for all new livestock facilities. It allows for variances to the MDS 2 distances if the variance is deemed to be, and I'm quoting "minor in nature," meaning no unacceptable adverse impact, and/or provided the subject building proposal mitigates an environmental impact associated with the subject farming operation. Now, for the MDS 2 requirements for the proposed residence, structure, sorry, the applicant is proposing- uh, structure, sorry, the applicant is proposing to construct a uh, one thousand five hundred seventy-nine square meters, which is seventeen thousand square feet hog finishing barn. It's enclosed mineral storage beneath the barn. The site previously housed two barns, which due to deterioration were demolished last summer. They had a combined floor area of approximately nine thousand square feet, which is eight hundred thirty-six square meters. Also, what they're proposing is twice the size. These barns were considered to be legal non-conforming uses with non-compliant setbacks. Given an increase in size and volume of the proposed barn, the non-conforming or non-compliant use and setback cannot be reinstated. As a result, there's a need to rezonate the lands from MAR to A, which reduced MDS two setbacks in relation to the Fairhaven Church and School, the Fairhaven Cemetery and the neighboring residence at four one eight seven line fifty-one, which is on the east side of the subject property. There are, uh, so these four properties they mentioned would be impacted by the MDS two setback. Um, now the MDS guidelines state that institutional uses such as churches, schools and cemeteries are considered type E land uses, which means there are more sensitive land uses than residential dwellings that require building distance. Um, the planning department has reviewed the MDS calculation provided by Cleon Martin, who is the nutrient management consultant retained by the applicant. It should be noted that after further consultation with the nutrient management consultant, the actual setback to the Fairhaven, Fairhaven Church and School, which is across from line sixty-one, not adjacent to it, has been adjusted in this report, um, that is before you to align with the calculation formula used for the cemetery and the residence, which is uh, adjacent um, to the subject site. Um, in the previous report, the distance was reported as seven hundred sixty meters, the church building and seven hundred ninety meter, these two, uh, to the school. Now, the new recommended measurement is six hundred meters to the, measured to the property line for both of the church and school. And that is uh, because of the sensitive nature of these two um, churches and schools. And that's the same calculation that was used for Fairhaven Cemetery, um, adjacent to the site. Um, so as for the uh, proposal, again, the portion of the subject lands where the barn is proposed to be constructed is currently zoned uh, MAR, Mineral Aggregates Resource. The MAR zone permits uses related to extraction and processing of mineral resources. The proposed barn is not a permitted use within the MAR zone. Um, I went over the definition of uh, mineral agriculture resources as per the official plan and how tertiary deposits um, are not uh, defined uh, within that um, definition. Now, the land has historically been de- dedicated to agricultural activities and the owner applies to maintain its use for farming. Um, notably, the site has never been used for aggregate resource excavation. Regarding possible adjustments to the MDS setbacks, the MDS guideline states that MDS two setbacks should not be reduced except in limited size-specific circumstances that meet the intent of the MDS document. Examples include circumstances that mitigate environmental or public health and safety impacts or avoid natural or human-made hazards. If inappropriate by municipality, the process by which a reduction to MDS may be considered, um, would typically be through a minor variance to the local zoning bylaw provisions. And also a zoning bylaw amendment may also be appropriate. There are two locations of the subject property where a barn could meet the requirement of the MDS two setback. However, both have limitations. The first location situated closer to the existing farming cluster falls within the flood pain regulated by the Grand River Conservation Area, posing a health and hazard risk. The secondary location where the barn can be situated, which lies outside of the, all of the MDS circles, is approximately one kilometer away from line sixty-one, which is towards the end of the, toward the rear of the site, um, around here, away from the rest of the front said buildings and being difficult to access the barn from line sixty-one. As for public comments, um, we had a public meeting held on September seventh. The planning department reviewed comments received from the public in advance and up to the meeting. The letter of support from the Fairhaven Board of Trustees and their concern regarding their own future expansion of the church and school were raised at the meeting. Uh, the letter also, another letter was provided to council um, from the GRCA, the, that had no con- concern with the proposal. And there was an adjacent property owner's letter of support. And um, all of these letters are uh, included with the report that is before you for tonight. So in conclusion, the planning allowances examines two key sections of the application relating to the construction of the proposed barn. The first consideration pertains to the rezoning of the site uh, from MAR to agricultural to facilitate the construction of a barn. And the second consideration involves reducing the MDS two setback. Um, with regards to the agriculture resources, planning staff are of the opinion that a proposed hog barn is located in an agricultural area where the predominant activity is typical agricultural operations and the site does not house a high-quality crop or resources. Furthermore, agricultural activities are permitted under the Mineral Aggregates Resource designation and therefore is more appropriate for the continuation of agricultural use. The agricultural use has been the main use of this site and the continuation of the use is consistent with the PPS and the county's official plan. With respect to the requirement of reduced MDS setback, particularly focusing on the proximity to the Fairhaven Cemetery or church and the neighboring residence at four one eight seven line sixty-one that are the closest to the proposed barn. Staff are of the opinion that the proposed location of the barn is appropriate and will not pose any more of a compatibility issue than the previous barn. As previously indicated, the MDS guidelines support a reduction of the required setback only when the suggested MDS setback location is deemed unsuitable due to health and safety concerns and poses a hazardous risk. In this case, the alternative locations for the barn, reviewed by the staff, uh, do not meet the required setbacks from the institution, that do not meet the required setbacks from the institutional uses are not reasonable, reasonable due to hazardous risks associated with the development in a flood pain and causing hardship, the function, uh, functionality of a viable farm operation. It should be further noted that lifestyle facilities can only be located in agricultural areas and therefore planning staff become an approval of the proposed reduction. With this, I would like to conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions if we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of council? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received the report dated October third, twenty twenty-three, prepared by the planner entitled Zoning Bylaw Amendment D fourteen dash Zed zero nine dash twenty twenty-three dash PE, submitted by MHBC Planning. Cara Pierre Chauvin, on behalf of one zero zero one three two nine nine eight, Ontario Inc., Cara Gerald Zer, affecting lands described as concession to Part Lot thirteen, Plan two ninety-one, Park Lots ten to twelve, Part South Street, Part Alfred Street, forty-two twenty-nine, Line sixty-one, Mornington Ward, Township of Perth East, for information. And it council approves zoning bylaw amendment two oh nine dash twenty twenty-three. Need a mover and a secondary move by Hugh, second by Amanda. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks Punay. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, we're moving on to CIO and our first report is a Shakespeare Water Environmental Assessment, Treatment, Capital Project Funding. And this is a joint report from uh, our CIO, Manager, Public Works and Treasurer. And I believe Mike is going to uh, give us a synopsis. Mike, what is yours?
Thank you, Mayor Egits. Yeah, um, this is um, following through on the next step as it relates to the Shakespeare uh, water project. And uh, based on council's uh, preferred alternative, the option two C, which uh, happened a while back. Uh, staff moved forward, um, looking to allocate costs between uh, treatment growth and the fire components. And then based on those allocations, we spent some time analyzing uh, potential scenarios to fund the actual project. And before council, we've presented three of the scenarios that we've considered. And the, the staff recommendation is scenario three. When we looked at the scenarios, we're conscious and um, of trying to reduce the financial impact on the project as much as we can. And so we've um, looked at utilizing reserves. Um, and uh, to Paula, our treasurer's credit, she's included with, in the scenario three, kind of uh, information, further information for council uh, as it relates to reserve balances that uh, could potentially be tied to the project as well. We recognize that um, there's a limited number of properties. So a, a project of this scale does have a financial impact and uh, we are conscious of that. So we are trying to limit that um, impact. And we recognize that um, a lot of the reserves that are listed are discretionary. So if council uh, chooses to be even more aggressive in terms of utilization of the reserves, I think staff uh, recognizes that that's an option as well. So um, certainly, yeah, we worked on it collaboratively and tried to be thoughtful as possible through the process. And we'll try and answer any questions if there are any from council.
Okay, questions, comments? Amanda?
Yeah, I'm uh, I'm just struggling with this report a little bit. Um, just given the uh, for well owners, I think, I think some of us have said publicly that um, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to pay additional costs for the water system. And then now we're saying for fire protection, they're gonna have to pay. And so I think, like, I guess I was not anticipating this when we went through the options um, to look at, you know, dealing with the situation at hand with the arsenic and also um, you know, looking to the future. Um, and also ensuring that, you know, we had some uh, services available for fire. Um, I wasn't anticipating this, this sort of costing bit on the well owners. So it's just a comment. I don't know where we go from here. But I'm really struggling with this because I think I've always understood that there wouldn't be cost for current well owners with this new system. And so that they wouldn't be impacted. So anyways, I'm just struggling with, with it. I don't know the solution. I don't have a solution, but it's just something that I am struggling with a little bit. Cause it, in the options, it doesn't give an option for um, no costing for, for those that are on well. So um, that's where my head is at.
Okay, Hugh?
When you look at it. Uh, you'd probably have to add two hundred and sixty-seven as future growth. That'd be almost increasing Shakespeare by whatever, fifty-five percent in size. And um, that's to take almost one hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That um, that's fairly a hope. Like, that's not really something you can count on. So for me, that's a, a lot of money to have on a hope. And then the uh, the North and Southeast Hope gravel pit reserves, um, that can be used for anything. I would assume that, you know, gravel reserves would be something that you'd use uh, for roads.
Paula, do you want, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I can uh, address that through you, Mayor Egits. The North and Southeast Hope gravel reserves are noted in the reserve policy for a specific project that occurred, that project is done. It is a water sewer project and the funds remain. From what I've read and what, what I've gathered is they anticipated those reserves would go to a zero at the end of that project. They're not. There's still a little bit of money in there. So I felt this was in line with the water sewer project that it was used for previously. And it's in the North and Southeast Hope area directly. So I thought it was a good use to use those reserves up.
And uh, OCIF, what was that for again?
Through you, Mayor. That's the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund.
Okay. Is that it? Yep, okay. Anyone else? Bob?
Just to make a comment on Hugh's question about the gravel pit reserves. Uh, it's my recollection that when the wastewater project went ahead, the uh, engineering component or some of that came from those reserves. So it has been used for Shakespeare in the past. So subsetizing again, I don't think is a big deal. And to clean up another reserve, it's probably a good idea.
Okay, anyone else? Andrew?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Egits. Just I, I had a chance to speak with staff today. Maybe I'll just go over the questions I asked. So on the third um, third scenario there, just so existing water connections is the current municipal customers, correct? And then the future growth would be any, you know, the Webster Street subdivision or what else? Any, any new housing, new development would be that. And then the non-connected households is the well owners, right? Basically. Yeah, and the, the right-hand side column in orange, I guess that's orange. That, those are reserve balances with, with possibilities for lowering the, the uh, the tax, not the taxation, but the fee that's gonna be charged for this. Yeah, just want to make sure. I, I, I thank you for helping with that today, just to make sure we understood it and.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we do have a motion. We'll see where it goes. Uh, that council of the township of Perth East received the report entitled Shakespeare Water Environmental Assessment EA Treatment Capital Project Funding, CAO twenty twenty-three dash eleven, PW twenty twenty-three dash twenty, FIN twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, dated October third, twenty twenty-three, prepared by the Chief Administrative Officer, Manager, Public Works and Parks and Treasurer for information. And further, that council approves scenario three, utilize investing in Canada infrastructure, ICIP, funding water reserves sixty-three thousand, Northeast Open, Southeast Hope gravel pits reserves sixty-eight thousand and fifty dollars, fire reserves one hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty, as a preferred funding alternative. And further, that council approved two payment options for the existing water connections and non-connected households. Number one, payment in full at completion of project. And number two, six, no interest installments to be included with the bi-monthly water dash sewer or slash sewer bill utility invoice beginning at project completion. And further, that council approve implementation of an amendment to the fees and charges bylaw to include the fee for growth slash future connections at project completion. And further, that all necessary bylaws required to implement collection of fees be prepared for council approval. So do we have a mover and a secondary? Andrew, moving?
Uh, I'd like to move a modified version of that, of my own, if I could. It's very.
No, no, first, that's the motion on the floor. And if you want to make an amendment to that, you can, but.
Sure, I'd like to make an amendment.
So mover, do we have a mover and a secondary? Moved by Jerry, second by Jeremy. Okay.
Thank you. So I'd like to move that the fire component for existing water customers, connections as per the chart on scenario three and non-connected households. He funded through B nil and funded through OCIF, CCB, water reserves and corporate reserves, um, some combination thereof.
Okay, so you're asking for the, the non-connected household, a fire to be taken from somewhere else. Is that what you're asking? Just so I'm clear?
Yeah, existing water connections and non-connected.
Oh, you want both existing and non-connected?
Yes, definitely. I, I, I don't have the discussion right now, but that's if we want to take.
I want clarity on the motion. That's what I'm asking.
Yes, I, I read uh, existing water connections and non-connected households, please.
And do we have a secondary? Hugh?
This is clarification. So councillor McAlpine, the existing and non-connected fire component, and which reserve was it that you were wanting that to be funded from?
Uh, I, I would leave it up to staff. The, the dollar amount is, is fairly insignificant. It's probably just over a hundred thousand dollars for the two. We discussed three today. So I would say OCIF. probably just over $100,000 for the two, we discussed three today, so I would say OCIF, CCBF, water reserves and/or the corporate reserves, or a combination thereof.
I just have a question on the amount of dollars. It's a question on the amount of dollars then for the treasurer, I'm calculating 260 non-connected households and 169 existing connections, multiplied by $250 for a total of 107,250, that would be the amount, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions on the amendment? Okay, yep, go ahead.
Okay, so the amendment would be that existing and non-connected users, the fire component and the amount of $170,950 be funded through reserves. 107,250.
And it's non-connected households.
And existing water.
And existing, the existing piece was okay, it's just the, we got a little tweak there.
Non-connected households. I'll read it again. So existing and non-connected households, the fire component and the amount of 107,250 be funded through reserves.
107 or 170?
It's 107, 250.
Okay, sorry, no, I wrote down 170, that's, I want-
I think I said 170.
That's why I want clarification.
So that was moved by Andrew and seconded by Hugh.
Okay, any questions on the amendment, Jerry?
Just a question on which reserve? Whatever staff sees fit.
Okay, anyone else with questions? If not, we're going to vote first on just the amendment. So the amendment is to existing, and just so I'm clear, existing water connections and non-connected households, the fire portion will be taken from a reserve. Okay? Everyone clear? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Okay, so then the amendment and the original motion? We're not going to read it all out again, but part of it's going to be changed.
So this will be added to this motion, the part that they just-
Yeah, the amendment will be added, that, that the money, that 107,250 will come out of one of the reserves. Do we have to change anything else?
I don't think, I think everything else is-
Everything else is good.
Fine, and then this would become and further after this.
Okay, so it's the original motion that was read out and with the amendment, because the amendment was passed, so now it's the whole thing together, right? Everybody clear on that? It's everything, the original motion and the amendment. Okay, all those in favor of that? Carried. Okay, thank you. Then we're going to move on to Housing Affordability Task Force, and Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. So yeah, the township received correspondence from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It's regarding the Housing Affordability Task Force final report, including, I think it was 55 recommendations. So the minister has asked all mayors to rank their top five ranking of the 55 recommendations. Staff have gone through the report, we've chosen a top five, and I've put in some comments there as to why we recommend those top five. I've also included a chart with other, some other recommendations that we discussed, and council may feel free to decide other, the other initiatives would be in their top five, and if there's any questions, I can try and answer.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Any questions of the report? Hugh?
No, it's a good, I think it's a very good job. Just one question on page, the 130, there's there about regulated professional stamp on application municipalities and have no library, and it does not need an additional stamp, and maybe Wes could answer that, like, for now, when we give out building permits and things like that, you have to stamp it, right?
Yeah, through the mayor, the professional engineer has a stamp and is licensed to practice in the province of Ontario, so they are under their own jurisdiction there as far as how they're governed within the Professional Engineers Act, so that, that's correct.
But being as those people stamp it, does that limit our liability then when you give the building permit, like, right now? Does that limit our liability? And then when you give the building permit, with all these other stamps?
Yeah, so through, through your worship, they're required under the act to carry the necessary insurance, liability insurance associated with their practice in Ontario, so it would be roping in the, the engineer's insurance in that regard.
Thank you.
Just, just one point to clarify, Deputy Mayor, the part of what this recommendation is, and you may hear this referred to a lot as peer review, a lot of times, an engineer has stamped a design and then it's peer reviewed by another engineer. What this recommendation is, is suggesting that because of the qualifications that our CBO spoke of, that peer review sometimes becomes a burden and slows down planning applications because it's going back and forth through engineers. So it's, yeah, the conversation about ensuring that we have the appropriate coverage is important, but a lot of what this recommendation relates to is the peer review process, at least that's my interpretation, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Eggers, I had a brief chance to talk to staff just before, and my concern is that it's called the Housing Affordability Act, and I see a little bit about where we're looking at the, the overall plan, at least, maybe not our component, is looking at, you know, relying on the builder and the developer to, you know, reduce the cost per square foot because they'll have, they'll have less rest tape, or red tape. It's a housing affordability study, I want to see something that, that's going to get my young people in a house. So I don't see anything in this plan, is there anything in there that, that we can do, at least locally, to, like, I know it's a business, but I just, there's nothing there to actually make a house affordable, really, other than trusting in, in business?
Sure, through you, Mayor. Yeah, there is some things that we could do here locally, and some of these recommendations or some of these initiatives that we've picked out, we have started to do already here at the township level. For one, it's the pre-consultation, so ensuring that when developers come with proposals, they're, once their applications are submitted, it's considered a complete application and we're able to process it quicker, which in turn is supposed to reduce that red tape and limit the costs on the developer's side. So there are some things that we can do here locally, and then, on some of these, you'll notice, some of these are also a call for more funding. We believe that one of the biggest sort of challenges we face is the funding, and how do we get that funding to support all these big developments for such a rural municipality with not the resources of a big city? And so that's what we tried to pick out for these initiatives, is ones that a little put the burden back on the federal and provincial government a little bit, to at least provide smaller municipalities with the opportunity to provide a better service.
No, I'd agree with you, what you said, because that Housing Accelerator Fund, basically, where we're competing with Toronto and other voter-rich regions for money, I mean, most of the, we wouldn't meet most of their deadlines or most of anything they had, so, good point.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have a motion that council of the township of Perthies received a report entitled Housing Affordability Task Force DDC-2023-35 dated October 3, 2023, prepared by the Development and Drainage Coordinator for information. And further, that council directs staff to send correspondence to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing with the following top five recommendations. Number one, number seven, encourage and incentive municipalities to increase density in areas with excess school capacity to benefit families with children. Number two, number 21, require a pre-consultation with all relevant parties at which the municipality sets out a binding list that defines what constitutes a complete application, confirms the number of consultations established in the previous recommendations, and clarifies that if a member of a regulated profession such as an engineer has stamped an application, the municipality has no liability and no additional stamp is needed. Number three, number 22, simplify planning legislation and policy documents. Number four, is number 23, create a common, province-wide definition of plans of subdivision and standard set of conditions which clarify which may be included, require the use of standard provincial-wide legal agreements, and where feasible, plans of subdivision. And number five, number 48, the Ontario government shall establish a large Ontario housing delivery fund and encourage the federal government to match funding. This funding should reward A, annual housing growth that meets or exceeds provincial targets, B, reductions in total approval times for new housing, and C, the speedy removal of exclusionary zoning practices. We need a mover and a seconder, moved by Hugh, second by Jerry. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thank you, we're moving to clerk, and the first is tile loan application by Alan Lipti, and Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, we received a tile loan application from Mr. Lipti, he's looking to tile his farm and he'd like to take advantage of the OMAFR program. I believe the last one that council saw was back in 2020, so this isn't something we see typically every day. So the program allows the owners to apply for up to a 75% of the total cost of the tile drains project with a maximum of $50,000 in one year. So Mr. Lipti's project is quite large, so he is looking to apply for the $50,000 for this year, as well as a continuation loan for next year for the remaining $19,000, making the amount requested $69,000. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, any questions, Hugh?
Just out of curiosity, what's the interest rate on the loans?
Through you, Mayor, it's 6% currently, it's currently 6%.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion that council of the township of Perthies received a report entitled Tile Loan Application Alan Lipti, DDC-2023-36 dated October 3, 2023, prepared by the Development and Drainage Coordinator for information. And further, that council approved the application for a tile drainage loan of $50,000 and a continuation loan of $19,000 as to drain land described as concession 7, Part Lot 13, Mornington Ward, owner property of rural number 320-006-15600 and 4265 line 73. We need a mover and a seconder, moved by Hugh, second by Andrew, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, we have no reports from finance, then we go to Public Works and Parks, and the first one is a Melverton stop sign request. Jake, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. So this report covers a correspondence that was received back in September regarding the intersection of Cobalt Street South and Gerber Drive. Matthew, if you could just pull up, yeah, that's the one. So as the intersection currently stands, there's stop controls going north and south on this intersection with none through either side of Gerber Drive. The request itself was, was looking for implementation of an always-stop at this intersection. So staff firstly looked at the Ontario Traffic Manual, specifically Book 5, which addresses regulatory signage. So Section 2 in particular covers stop signs and outlines of the purpose of these stop controls. As per Section 2, the purpose of a stop sign is to clearly assign right-of-way between vehicles approaching intersection from different directions. It states, "Stop signs are not intended to be used as speed control devices and should be limited to the control of right-of-way conflicts." So in our opinion, this one here doesn't merit a four-way stop based on the fact that Cobalt Street to the south is, is not a through street, there's only four residences that exist there at this point. So at this point, I would, would not suggest council implement the four-way stop, but as a second alternative for council to consider, we could look at painting crosswalk lines here as, thank you, Matthew, shows in attachment 2. Basically, this would just delineate a pathway for pedestrians to cross, given the location of the sidewalk on the east side of the street, getting to school for, for kids, it would assist in that. We would also be putting stop bars in either direction to help delineate further. The, the only, I guess, thing that council would need to consider for this particular intersection would be there are several others that are very similar in nature, so, so putting, putting this crosswalk in would, excuse me, would likely, or at least opens the door for further painting crosswalks to go in, so the council needs to give consideration to perhaps more of these going in if they do choose to put this one in here. So at this point, and I think I mentioned in the report there, I, I kind of measured out an arbitrary radius of 500 meters, and there's six other intersections that could be considered identical to this one. So I would suggest at this point that, that this doesn't go forward, but I'll leave that up to council. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer.
Okay, questions of the report? Jerry?
Yeah, not, not many questions here, thanks Jake for the report, this is your first one? Well, no, first is officially the manager. So, and normally, as everyone around this table knows, I appreciate staff reports, I'm 95, 98% with staff, where they come with a report and with recommendations. However, with this one, I really think we need to put the four-way stops here, I don't think we need the lineage, but I do think we need the four-way stops. This, the group that came to us, there was a number of residents that were actually residents of Melverton, Perth East, sometimes we get petitions when they're, they're not residents, but that was good to see. So, yeah, I, I think we, we got to go against the recommendation, I think we need to put the, the four-way stops in here. It's, I, I understand, I've been to a number, a number of seminars that, that do say, you know, stop, four-way stops aren't to, the reason, aren't to slow down traffic, but I, I really think this is, this is one of those reasons where we need to slow down the traffic. That new subdivision down there, they're flying down there, and there's a lot of kids going to school, so I, I would definitely be voting against the recommendation, and when it comes time, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Jeremy?
I think further to Jerry's point, significant amount of traffic travels east on Gerber Drive and then turns left to head north on Cobalt to the school, and you do have a significant amount of children that, that- And you do have a significant amount of children that, that cross where that crosswalk is painted or is shown on the map. I think having those people stop at a stop sign at that corner when they're traveling east would be prudent as well, because those people come traveling down Gerber, turning left onto Cobalt, heading north, and at the same time, you have a significant amount of children traveling that way. You have a number of streets further from the school that don't have sidewalks, so this is quite a traveled sidewalk to get to the school on the north side of Gerber Drive. So, having traffic stop at that corner before they proceed and head north onto Cobalt, I am in favor of that as well.
Okay, anyone else comments or questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. I'm just wondering if I could ask staff, is, is there any, any OPP reports, any, any radar sign values, any speed studies, any, any other actual data to go by that we could look at?
Through you, Mayor. At this point, there, we don't have any of that data. We can certainly reach out to request it if there is any. Additionally, we are going to be actually purchasing a radar device for us, for our own use that we could implement here. That's an option that, that council could look at as well.
Okay, Bob?
Yeah, I appreciate the report and fully understand the concern of setting precedents with stop bars and four-way stops that aren't according to the traffic code. Has any consideration been given to changing the stop signs and putting them on Gerber Drive since Gerber Drive is the same problem as Mill Street? It kind of slopes to the east and people start to speed up, and I'm sure most of the offenders are probably people that live in this area or those that are trying to avoid the, the school. So, Pugh Street will be the next one that becomes a problem as well. But any staff comments on changing the stop signs to be on Gerber?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Gerber Drive would be, would be considered the through street there due to the nature of the piece to the left of Cobalt, or the south on Cobalt Street. So, in theory, your, your through street would be, would be Gerber Drive. So, changing the stop sign arrangement would really limit traffic, which again is, or limit through traffic, which is against the OTM recommendations. So, I don't think it would be something that would, would fall under their, their direction.
Okay, anyone else? So, we'll read the first part of the motion, and then if Jerry wants to add, we will amend what staff recommendation that Council of the Towns of Perth East receive the report dated October 3, 2023, entitled Milverton Stop Sign Request, Gerber Drive and Cobalt Street South, PUB 2023-21, prepared by the Manager of Public Works and Park for information. So, I want a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. Okay, Jerry, if you wish to amend it?
Just to process, yeah, I'm not amending maybe.
Well, you're amending the original motion, you're adding a part to it.
Okay, then we erect two more stop signs on Gerber Drive to make it a, on a four-way stop.
Okay, so you're asking for stop signs to be on Cobalt Street, or, right? No, on Gerber, on Gerber Drive?
Yes.
Yep, okay, just so I'm clear. And a seconder, Jeremy? And Jerry?
Just a couple things. So, we, we have erected the, the speed, the radar, see where that, I'm gonna say pink, but it's orange, that orangy house, I think there was one about there. And to Bob, Bob's point about Pugh Street, we, they, we did have a delegation come, and we did put the one up on Pugh and St. Mary's, and that seems to have helped a bit. It's just getting drivers used to the signs being there as stop signs. I know the, when we put a new sign up, stopped, they do put a, a new sign as you're approaching, so those are just some other comments.
Okay, Ashley?
And just so council's aware as well, bylaw, we'll have to come back to the next council meeting to approve the additional stop signs. So, Jerry's addition, which was moved by Jerry, seconded by Jeremy, I have as direct staff to implement necessary steps for implementation of stop signs at Gerber Drive and Cobalt Street South.
Okay, everybody clear? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, and then the original motion with that amendment, receive it for information, and become a four-way stop. All those in favor? I lost my train of thought, sorry. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Okay? And next, we're going to move to the G2G Trail Connection Request. Jake?
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. This report is also in response to correspondence received. This came through Joel Phelan, who looks after a section of the, the G2G trail. They sent us a letter requesting, or what we comprehend to be, looking for us to basically install the, the pathway between William Street and CPR or Main Street. We don't actually own this land. This is, this is Ontario-owned land at the moment. It is our understanding that the G2G does lease this along with the rest of the G2G trail. So, it's not up to us what happens, but staff have recently done a couple of trails that are similar in nature to this. So, I put together some, some numbers. The cost of, of us or Public Works putting in a trail would, would be roughly fifteen thousand. That would be included in our capital budget for 2024, should council choose to support this. This is kind of one of the remaining gaps in the G2G trail. But again, it is in our land, so we would fully expect that the G2G Rail Trail Inc. would, would look at getting the approvals necessary for this to happen. So, I'll leave it up to council, and any questions, I'll try and answer.
Okay, any questions of the report? Hugh?
Oh, yeah. Venus, it's not our land, and somebody else is leasing the land just for liability and stuff like that if we went in and did it. I'm not really sure I can support this.
Jerry?
Yeah, I, I would support it, and as Deputy Mayor has said, it's not our land, but if we can, if the G2G could certainly help, we, it would be, make us kind of respond, like, give us those people that are using the G2G trail, because it is a great system. We're all, we're all using it for, to help this little gap, get it completed. But, yeah, because it's not ours. Again, I want to support it to get it done, but maybe there's other avenues we could assist with some funding of some sort, but maybe some clarification.
Jake?
Yeah, if I may, may, Mayor. So, this would, this would basically be just another segment of the G2G, wouldn't be looked at any differently. So, whatever liability we would have on any of the other G2G would be the same here, which I don't believe is any, is my understanding. So, this section is no different than the other pieces of the G2G. It's just something that's never been built.
Jeremy?
Yeah, to clarify, so Joel, I believe, sent the original request in, and it was supported by the G2G, right? The request then came in from the G2G for us to more or less finance the addition to the trail. So, the G2G is fully aware that we, if, if it was passed, that we would be the ones constructing it. It's not that, you know, if they have to seek approval from wherever, they are the ones who asked us to do this. It wasn't a third party as well. It was the G2G that, that came forward to us at Joel's request.
Okay, any other questions, Jerry?
One last thing, too, if we do support it and moving forward with it, I know there's a number of residences that, residents that people are using, that maybe storing things on there, sheds, or, I know a couple of them that actually mow the grass, so they're looking after it as well. So, we need some communication to them as well. Yeah, I'd, I'd support, maybe we send this to the budget for next year, but I just go from there.
Okay, Andrew, how about you go next?
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. Just wondering, how does this G2G organization, how do they, how do they get their funding? Is it provincial funding? Is it, they stick a bucket on a tree and people drop quarters in as they go by? How, how do they get their funding? Does anybody know?
I mean, I can, I can give some, some idea on it. I'm not directly involved, but I think a little bit of everything. They recently received a grant, or a community group received a grant that ended up putting a bridge at Millbank for the G2G, and I think that was a federal grant, if I'm not mistaken. But the, the funding sources come from various levels of government, as well as a number, a bunch of the funding was through, there was, I think it came to council, an invitation to a, a barbecue last week at the railhead at the, in Millbank for the G2G trail that fundraised additional money for that bridge that went in as well. So, I think there's a whole bunch of different funding sources that they do have.
Yeah, and I was at that event last week, and they had numerous silent auction items, and you could also donate to help raise money. So, I have one question if, and we've already done a couple. So, the areas that we fix up for them are, then we responsible to maintain them, or who maintains them? They do, once they're there?
Yeah, if I may, so the, the section that we put in this past summer is a little bit different than the rest, because it was on donated land. So, that is our land, and we're responsible for maintenance of that. But the rest of, of the G2G, including what would be this piece, if council did go forward with it, would be for them to maintain the G2G.
Okay, anyone else? So, we'll start off with the motion that we have in front of us, and then if we want to add to it, that Council of the Towns of Perth East receive the report dated October 3, 2023, entitled G2G Rail Trail Connection Request, Main Street to William Street, PUB-2023-22, prepared by the Manager of Public Works and Parks for information. Moved by Bob, second by Hugh. Okay? Anything else? Hugh?
No, I would just make an amendment that we ask them to see if they can raise some money first, and then look at this again at budget.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Andrew? Okay, so everyone's clear on the amendment that we're going to ask them to raise the funds towards the fifteen thousand dollars, and then if they don't make that goal, then we will help. Questions, Jeremy?
Yeah, a comment on that item is that, that, that is what they're doing constantly, is trying to raise money for these different types of trail sections. So, I, I know that they are actively doing that already. This is a small chunk of it that I do believe should be referred to budget. I mean, we can ask them to, you know, continue to raise money as they are still doing, and we can tell them, you know, that the fifteen thousand is what we would suggest it's going to cost us to do that, but I think they're going to be continuously fundraising for these types of things already, so.
Okay?
Just that they could, if they could work with, say, back here or somebody to see if they can get some grants or something like that to, I'm sure the public will notice now.
Okay, so we do have an amendment?
Okay, so moved by Hugh, seconded by Andrew, direct staff to inquire with group to continue to raise money for the trail and to consider the remaining amount in the 2024 capital budget.
Okay, clears mud? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. And then the main motion with that amendment, receive it for information, and the amendment that we passed that they do some fundraising, we look at it in our budget. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay. We have no reports from building, no reports from recreation, no reports from fire. The next item is under correspondence, and that's from the Zion United Church in Rostock, and they would like us to waive the fee that they had for their program this past Sunday at the perk here in Milverton. So, what would council wish to do? Jerry?
Yeah, we've had a number of different groups come to us to waive the fees. Unfortunately, we, I think ninety-nine point nine percent, we've said no. So, I think we just receive this one for information and, and wish them luck. It's just, it's just not something that we've, we've done in the past, so.
Okay, anyone else? Who wants to move that? Then we receive the report for information, moved by Jerry, seconded by Jeremy. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, now we're going to go to council reports and committee reports. So, first is my mayor's meeting log, where I was for the month of September. Any questions? What I did, what I, where I was? If not, any council reports on the committees that they sit on? Nope, so we need a motion then to accept the mayor's meeting log, moved by Hugh, second by, second by Jerry. All in favor? Carried. Okay, then we're going to bylaws and first and second readings. We have three bylaws. Bylaw 118-2023, oh, sorry.
Oh, not really announcement, but I was at the.
Yes, Hugh.
We do that under announcements, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll, we'll come, yeah. Let's do bylaws first. So, three bylaws, 118-2023, provisional bylaw to provide for a drainage works known as Road 130 Municipal Drain, and that was item 6.1 on our agenda. Bylaw 119-2023, bylaw to provide for the amendment of Branch B of the Cameron Municipal Drain, 2022, collection of assessments. And the third one, bylaw 209-2023, a bylaw to amend bylaw 30-1999, concession to part lot 13, and that was in the Mornington Ward, and that was number eight-point-one-point-one tonight. So, a mover and a seconder for first and second readings, moved by Hugh, seconded by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. And then we have two bylaws, third and final reading, and those are 119-2023, to provide for the amendment of Branch B of the Cameron Municipal Drain, collection of assessment, and bylaw 209-2023, bylaw to amend bylaw 30-1999, and that had to do with the Alfred Street, forty-two-twenty-nine, line sixty-one, Mornington Ward bylaw. So, all those in, or mover and a seconder, I'm getting ahead of myself, moved by Jeremy, second by Bob. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we have no closed session. Do we have any notice of motions? New business? We have two items under new business. We had two, two delegations. One was the Source Protection Coordinator. I think Mike wants to speak to that, so I'll let him speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer for council, I, I know that we've had a relationship with Oberthames and the Source Water Protection Team during the risk management work for a number of years. There are other options out there that exist. It's, the budget, you know, that they propose is around twenty thousand dollars, so it's not nothing. So, certainly, if council wanted, staff could consider some other options prior to the year end. We do have a little bit of time, not a lot of time, and maybe bring that back for council's consideration if they wanted us to look at other options from the Source Protection Service.
Okay, any comments? Amanda?
Just a question. I want to, I think this was brought up before, and I understood that part of the reason why we went with them is that there wasn't a lot of other options, and so now we're saying that there is. So, would it be like an RFP-type thing, or, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of, you know, if, if council were to look at other options, what that would look like?
So, I wouldn't say there's a lot of options, but there are other options. Even tonight, Julie, when she spoke, recognized that Grand River has risk management officials as part of their service, Wellington does, Maitland Valley Conservation also does. It would be, because it's a specialized service, Council Broadhagen, it wouldn't necessarily be a RFP, but we would ask others to. be RFP, but we would ask others to provide us with a submission, a business case for consideration based on our needs.
Jerry?
Sorry, Mike, did you say Grand River does not? I thought Julie said.
They do.
They do not, or they do, but we still go.
They never used to.
I don't think they do. Sorry, Mike, I'm not.
GRCA is connected with the Wellington Service? Sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, so, but there are other risk management officials that are providing services for GRCA.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't, that was misleading.
No, no, no worries. If I may, I think we got a good working relationship with them. They know our area, they know our well, our head, wellheads, protection areas. I think we probably should stick, stick with them.
Okay, anyone else? Bob?
Oh, given that we need a staff report on this anyway to renew the program, you may as well just include some other options, and then if you peruse some others that said we can do this for $10,000, then we have an easy choice to make.
Okay, anyone else? Andrew?
I agree, we should chop around a bit.
Okay. All right, well, we'll try this. Council of the Township of Perth East, receive the presentation from Julie Walker, Source Protection Coordinator, Thames-Sidenham and Region Drinking Water Source Protection, Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, UTRCA, Risk Management Services Agreement Renewal for Information, and that council direct staff to investigate other options for source water protection. Moved by Bob, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the second item that we had was our delegation from our Economic Development Group. So Council of the Township of Perth East, receive the presentation from Justin Diaz, Economic Development Officer, Ashley Lancing, Tourism Officer, and Maggie Kerr, Transit Project Coordinator, Perth County Economic Development, Tourism and Transportation, Biannual Update for Information. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, now announcements? Hugh?
Sorry, got out of, out of space and time there. And I know whether, I think Jerry was there, and you were there too, were you not?
Where?
At Greenwood Park.
No.
Amanda was there.
And Jerry.
And you. Yep, at different times. So, no, it was, I think they had a good day. I don't know how much they raised, but glad to get out to support them, and I hope they had a good day.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? My apologies for not getting there. It just, my farming, my husband did not understand that I needed to go somewhere Saturday morning when we're solidfilling. So Amanda?
Just a final plug for Oktoberfest this Saturday. So it's $20 for tickets in advance and $25 at the door. We are having a special ceremony at 5:30 with with our worship and our, the mayor from Nairstein and the band from Germany, so hopefully you guys can be in attendance. So the major ceremonies is from 5:30 to 7:00, and then from 7:00 PM onwards is the actual official Oktoberfest. So encourage you all to come out if you're able to.
Okay, anyone else? On Thursday evening, there is a meeting, help me, Mike, what's it called, for Punky Doodles Corners in Tavistock, and I believe Andrew, Hugh, and I are going to attend, because we share that intersection with the County of Oxford. So we're, it's a public meeting for the public to come and and voice their concerns on that corner, so.
The county shares that, or?
County, yes, county shares that, yes, so. But they're asking if representatives from Perth East, because it's in Perth East too, right? But it's a county road. So, okay, anything else? So we need a motion to accept, oh, no, no, we don't. No, sorry. We are moving on to confirmatory bylaw. Bylaw number 45-2023, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the township of Perth East, at its regular meeting held on October 3, 2023, be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, all in favor? Carried. And the last motion of the night that we're going to adjourn at 8:55 PM, moved by Amanda, second by Bob, all those in favor? Carried. Thanks, everyone. Great meeting, good night, and enjoy the rest of your evening.